Welcome to another edition of Yacht Life Chronicles where we are better together than separated. How you guys doing out there? Hope you're having a wonderful day. We have a special individual, special guest Saginaw native. You know, who's campaigning for city council, born and raised here in Saginaw. His name is Eric Bradock, you know, and um. We want to talk a little bit about what's going on in the political arena. You know, some a lack of, you know, that we didn't go, we didn't get, get a lack of votes that we didn't get for some politicians. It's like the black voters is evaporating now. We wanted to talk to him about how can we get black voters out? You know, how can we reach the voters that we need in order to be able to get the right people in these positions and in these seats? In order to make our community and make our conditions better. You know, so how you doing Eric?
How you doing man?
Alright, alright man. Thank you for coming in for this interview.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
You know, and uh, for the ones that don't know you out there, man, just give them your name and your social media as to where they can follow you at.
Oh, well, my name is Eric Bradock. I'm just generally on Facebook normally, but I'm Eric Bradock, born and raised here from Saginaw. I went to C.C. Coulter with the Central, graduated from Saginaw High. Uh, most people know me from out here from playing basketball. I played ball. Uh, middle school and high school, a little bit of elementary, but middle school and high school, I played basketball for Saginaw High. And also Saginaw Pride for a little bit. And um, and like I said, just hometown kid. I grew up out in townhouse and um, I grew up and um. My grandmother stayed on Fourteenth Street and my other grandmother stayed on Brown Street, so you know. Uh, my family, you know, uh, my, my parents, you know, they grew up in the projects. You know, and so as a kid, you know, um, just far as the community is all I knew, you know, far as you know, being a Bradock, you know. So that's where most people know me from. I'm also homecoming king for Saginaw High in ninety-four. You know, and um, so uh, that's what most people know me for, you know, and um, I actually left home. Left home and went to the military after, after everything.
Did you do any tours?
Well, I did two combat tours in Iraq, um, and two thousand four, I was in uh, Mosul Iraq. And then I was in Tajikistan Iraq and um, near Baghdad in like oh nine, two thousand ten, around there. Around that time, many moons ago, um, I actually retired combat veteran. I retired. I did a whole career in the military and so um, you know, accomplished that and so. I've always been a leader. I've been a leader as a junior enlisted, man. I've been, they, they put me in charge of soldiers from, from, from the jump. So you know, I know what leadership is.
So you understood your role at a young age?
Oh, yes.
You know?
Yeah, you, and I think that's, that's key in our generation, you know, um, with our politics, you know, people are so sensitive, you know. It's very, this, our time and generation, everybody's so emotional, so it's sensitive about the issues, you know. And like you say, all those things you saying good, and I always say a good leader know how to lead themselves first. You know, you gotta know how to lead yourself and you, and you right, you got to learn how to follow. And, and I, I believe that are born leaders, but a born leader understands what it takes to, to lead, you know, and understand what it takes to follow as well.
Do you understand at times about a leader, how a leader can be in they own mind and in they own head to the point where? They're not showing nobody else how to lead. As to where, because like what I'm saying is that with, in a lot of political world, right?
Right.
In the political world, you have a lot of politicians that is not showing the younger generation. They don't have that, uh, they don't have that, that, that tutelage that they passing down. Or they don't have any uh, mentorship that they giving to the younger generation as far as keeping them with them. Showing them how things is done, you know, instead of just, you know, if something happen to you, you dying with the power in your hand. You know, you don't have somebody, some type of protege if something happen to you. Or when your time is up, you know, you can pass the torch down to somebody else. Why do you think that's has become so obsolete in the political world?
Man, I, you know, that's a good topic because I think, you know, it's a big, it's a generational gap. It's a big generational gap. And you, 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 you see that in our politics, you see the politics, you see a lot of people that's in their seventies and eighties, you know, getting older and older. You know, and you don't see that, you don't see that uh, connection between the, the younger generation and the older generation. I, I, and I know that um, our generation is up next. And that's one of the reasons why I'm, you know, I'm running because I have the ability and the ability to lead and to, to, to make, to help make decisions. I'm also running with uh, we have Jacinta Seals and Tobias Young as well, you know, in our generation. I know they're running, good solid people. So I know that they could, we could make that connection with the older generation too as well. But like you said, you have to be, they have to be willing to pass that down, you know. And I think that is important because, you know, that's, and, and that's what it's all about, is passing it down to the next generations and what we building this up for. If we don't, if we don't take, if we don't take control of our community and take control of our family, it's gonna be harder for our babies.
How, how is, how important is it to invest into people like you? And people that's familiar with the community, that got roots and ties to the community versus us study. Bringing people to these neighborhoods like on the police force, bringing people, these people from different counties. And they don't have no roots here with the, with the people here, with the community. They don't wanna have no relationship with the community, you know, so it's a divide, you know. Um, I'm prejudiced, I'm biased towards you, you know what I'm saying? Because, you know, I don't know you. I don't have any, it's, there's no type of community relationship. So how important is it for a community to be able to invest into us who is raised? Who was born, who is really have a compassion and a heart for this community? You know, because on your campaign, we wanna vote for you, you know. And we wanna bring more people in and put more people in position as to where they are from Saginaw. We know these people, we done had sit downs with these people, we have, we majority on, we got their number on our phone. You know, they, they not so abstract from us to the point, we don't know them. And that's what's the big thing is, is that it's a gap on, 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 you know, everybody is so anonymous towards it. They don't every, don't nobody know each other. So if I really don't know you, I'm not voting for you, I'm not coming out. You know, I don't know you, who are you? You know, I never touch your hand, I ain't never, you know, because you got a lot of kids and you got a lot of people, you know. You know, they claim they want the younger vote, but you gotta get in the, in the, in the club. Sometimes you have to go on the lion's den, you know, in order to get the results that you looking for. A lot of people not willing to go on the lion's den.
Right, I, I.
You know what I'm saying?
I think what you're saying is you have to be able to reach our people. And I think that's where, and you know, I, I talk about it all the time, they had a, they had a uh. And I ain't gonna just pretty much name drop, but they had a, they had an event here. And, and it was a nice, it was a beautiful event. It was just put on, it's for the children, it's about to stop the violence. And you've seen the, the audience, it was a nice audience. And it was, it was a great, it's nothing pretty much wrong, but the only thing that I felt was wrong that the right people wasn't there to see. You know, you had the clergy, you had the people from the churches, they already know the implied task, but we need to, we need to get. We need to get the information to those that's not in the know. You know, that's not in the know, you know, like you say, gotta get down in the grassroots. And then one of the things you was talking about, I think it is important far as, you know, far as getting a home, someone homegrown and from your community because we gotta listen. I gotta listen to you. You know me, you know, you know my mother, you know my parents, you know my family, you know my background. You know I'm approachable, you know me, you're comfortable, people took, talk to me and speak and talk to me all the time and stop me, so you know, um. If being in that position, I understand that, you know, people gonna have some, some things to say, you know, some things they wanna put, put forth.
And they feel more comfortable with somebody they can reach out to.
And, and what we're, and what we're looking to do and, and looking to do forward hopefully is that we can, we can have a system in place or a method in place to where it's not intimidating for the citizens to make those complaints and then bring those issues to government, to the city government, to their local government.
So what is it, you know, going through those tours? What was one of the worst things that you experienced going through either, both of those tours that you went through?
Man, I would say. I, and I have to be honest with you, um, the first two, I had two tours. The first tour in Mosul was pretty rough. That was a rough, that was the real deal. Um, I was pretty much on the front line. We did convoys, uh, I did convoys for like seven months straight, night operations. I've been in four roads, side by side, missed one ambush. Um, so um, yeah, I, as far as the worst thing, I came, you know, we, I, I, we were, we was blessed, you know, we was blessed. We was one of the only companies that didn't lose a, uh, in the whole battalion, didn't lose a, didn't lose anybody. So everybody was.
So everybody who came.
Everybody came, we came back home.
That's what's up.
You know, we had some injuries, you know, we had a few people that we got deported early, but for the most part, everybody that we deployed with. And um, I just like to, you know, my, my people, our family, you know, we, we jailed together too, you know, in that situation, so. You know, and it's, it's, it's a unique situation and, and also too, man, I learnt a lot about sovereignty in, in, in your country and your community. It's, it's very important that we, we come together, cause you know, we are stronger together, man, and we have to come together as a people, you know, um.
Because we gotta get back to knowing our rights, like you said, with sovereignty. You know, that, those treaties that protects us, but it's a lot of state laws that override.
Where we have to get out and vote and you know, we have all this information online and we have all this, all this doctrine and all these beliefs and all this information on social media and you know, and to deter people from voting, but man, people died for us to vote. You know, back in eighteen, what is it, eighteen, eighteen sixty-five or eighteen sixty-seven, eighteen sixty-nine or eighteen seventy, when, when we was able to vote. And even back then, it's a, it's an article in the Boston Globe. You can go do your research, it's, it's an article, Boston Globe said the race for the black vote is on. And so with the Democratic and Republican parties, it's always been a fight for the black vote. We always had that power. And so we would, they do anything to kill that, you know.
And it's crazy that you said that they'd do anything to kill the black vote because I would recall a time, man, that. When we had to gather in a group of a hundred and we had to have like three, four groups. And we have to send, and certain groups would go hour ahead of each other, a couple hours ahead of each other because. You know, they will be waiting down there to kill you. So out of a hundred people, it may be sixty, fifty people, fifty percent that make it to cast a vote. Then once the vote is cast, the election is still being manipulated in some type of way. But we have come to a point in our society where, you know, people fought hard for us to vote, gave their lives, man, you know. Shared blood for us to vote and now we done got to a point in town, in this life as to where we don't vote no more. Like it, it means nothing to us.
It's, it's like we done got too complacent with life and with, you know, with, with everything else that's around us. You know, with respect to the advancement of technology and, and everything, and I mean, also I work in the school district, man, and you know, and. You know, you know, you know, the skill level of people, you know, reading and writing and, you know, all that, it has fallen too a little bit. So you know, you, you have to put that in account, man, and people have to be more deliberate, more intentional, you know, you know, you know. You know, follow grand, you know, granddad, grandma, and, and you know. And so the young generation have to learn how to, you know, like you said, it's all about passing down and it just, just ain't been passed down the right way, especially when it comes to voting.
Voting, right. So what was it that made you transition into the political world? What was it that you liked about the political world that you say, you know what, I'm finna offer my DNA in this here arena?
Oh, man, um, my life been catered to. Like I said, in the military, I've been a leader and I always been at that table. Been able to make some decisions. Um, also though too, you know, saying we, you know, if you want better, you have to do better too, you know, and so. You know, I, you know, I, I, you know, I was, I was a commissioner at the Human Planning Commission for a year. Um, I, I did that role and start, you know, learning, understanding, understanding a little bit about how the city operates with the budget and everything. And understand that our city for us to, to get change, we need good people at the table, you know. And so, you know, instead of just talking about it, I say, you know what, I'm gonna go ahead and be about it, you know. And so, um, the people, you know, I, I'm pretty sure the people, the public are looking for, you know, good people to come in and, and um. And, and take on that responsibility and um, like I said, I've been catered for that and um, and I'm looking here to, to, to help. Be part of the, you know, the growth and the, and the decision making for our people and for all communities in our city, man. My city, I love our city, you know, um, I've been all over the world and I really didn't have a place I really desired to be. And it was easy to come back home, man, you know. And so I know a lot of people be, you know, you know, have a lot of things going on here that, you know, caused them to not wanna be here. But I think, man, if you go other places, man, you'll see that Saginaw is a beautiful city, man, with the river down, the, the way it's just made, the way it's built, you know.
And sometime have to do with your mindset as well. You know, if you living in a poverty mindset, then you could look at your city as being the most impoverished thing you done been in.
I mean, and that's, I'm glad you brought that up because, man, our grandparents, you know, even when we was little, man, our grandparents and our parents. The way we lived back then, we didn't really understand what poverty, we didn't know what poverty was. We had everything, we, we ate every day, we played, we climbed trees, we ate apples, we ate. We ate out the garden and so we, we had a community. So you didn't necessarily know that, you didn't even know your neighbor next door was poor. You know, you didn't know what was going on there. Everybody was seeing the same and I, I think we can get back to that, you know, and I. You know, and I think we can get back to a, Saginaw was fun. I, I, I know everybody remember Saginaw back in the early eighties, man, before the crack era, man. Saginaw was fun, man. You go to neighborhood to neighborhood and you know, you was welcome with a glass of water, you know what I'm saying? So you know, we, in our community, we can get it back to that.
What you think about the black businesses being kind of shut out? And uh, dismissed in Saginaw? You know, we have, you know, a few black businesses that's been up and thriving for a while. You know, but it seem like that the city don't cater to, the city don't have an entrepreneurial fund. As to where they can get it to different businesses and help people amongst the community to be able to uh. With their business and be able to offer their services to the community. You know, why do you think it's not enough entrepreneurial help out there, man? To help a lot of these people in their businesses, you know, that has that, that, that food truck and, you know, they wanna start that, that, that shoe business. Maybe that clothing business, you know, that hair business, um, you know, grocery store, anything.
Uh, this right here, man, we're stronger together. Um, I've been hearing the uh, I, I've been getting a lot of talk to entrepreneurs and that's the first question they, that's the, they get on me about that. What, what we gonna do about the disparities in, in entrepreneurship? And, and like I said, that, that, that's a, you know, systematic system that we have to fight against. But I would like to say that the only way to fight against it is they got to come together. The entrepreneurs and the, the black entrepreneurs have to come together.
Do you think that, because it seem like. Because the city council, that city council, that it's been a lot of, lot of chaos amongst our own city council. And you, and the city is only as strong as the head, which is the city council. So if we got a weak city council, then we gonna have a weak city. You know, so how is it important, man, for us to be able to put a strong city council back together so we can get this city back? To thrive in, and the economy thrive and get it back to where it's supposed to be?
Man, and that's why, and that's why I'm running, man, so we can be, have a strong city council. And it's not gonna, it, I can't, we, and like, it's not one individual that's gonna do it by themselves. You know, and so, and that's why, you know, you, you, when you see that the, the field is crowded like it is, that's what I was, I was happy that you see so many people. That's on the ballot, you know, and then looking at the names on there, you know, you really got some good people on there, you know, and you really do, you know, and um. Um, I seen Tobias Young.
Now you some of the names.
You got Jacinta Seals, you got Tobias Young, I see Charles, I think Charles Allen on there. And so you, you have some good people on the ballot, man, and I think that, you know, with the, with the, with the group that's already there. You know, with the members that's already there, I think we can really make a good team, but I think. I, I believe that moving forward, we have to really have an agenda, really have a, a platform that say, this is what we, this is what we want to, to accomplish.
Sharing it with the people and being transparent with the people and letting, letting us know what you guys are doing.
But you know, with, with a strong city council, I believe that, you know, with a strong city council, I believe that the public gotta get stronger too. You know what I'm saying? You can't put, you, 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 you can't put, you can't put shine on dirt. You know what I'm saying? You got, once you, once you put, once you, you, you gotta sweep the floor, then you gotta mop it, then you shining, right? But we can't put shine on a dirty floor. We still got people out throwing trash out on the streets. You know what I'm saying? We still got people that's not taking care of homes. We gotta clean up first.
Damn, we got a king that don't know how to wear their crown too, you know what I'm saying? So we got a lot of people in the courtyard that's not responding well. We got a lot of people that's not, you know, that's, 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 that is showing a lot of negative uh, um, emotions and a negative. Uh, uh, attitude towards the city. You know what I'm saying? Because of the negative responses the people been getting. You know, we been having a lot of deaths around here, a lot of people been getting killed. Lot of politicians, you know, shout out to Pound Pew, Pound Pew been getting out and giving these people a voice and giving these victims' family. A voice as to where they can speak, just a high end, you know, give them a hug to know, you know, if you're on the city council, which means you are the city. So we have people from the freakney, you know, they wait on the, they're those victims that survived that and those victims' family. That of, of, of the ones that got killed out there, you know, they're waiting to just come get a hug. We got people that study getting killed now, you know, and the city is not, is, the city is not saying, hey. Let's stop this violence. Hey, let's do a peace rally. Or, hey, listen, let me come over such and such house and, and give her a hug and let the, that the city, let her know that the city of Saginaw is with her. We don't have that compassion no more.
Right, and I, I, I could say that, you know, talking to some of the, you know, I'm talking to, you know, a few of the newcomers that's coming in and, you know, we, you know, discussing on why they running and what they looking to do. You know, and I think the attitudes, we, we, we getting that attitude now, you know, I think we getting that attitude now. And um, and it's important, you know, that we have a strong council, it's important that we have some strong members on council. And those that's, and people that you know that's gonna listen, you know, cause we have to listen, you know, I, I be careful about. Okay, I'm gonna do this when I get in and about my vision because it become about me. It's not necessarily about me, it's about what, what we need and when, make sure that the resources that this city have for, that, that could be. The resource that we get, that it reach down to everyone and not just a, a certain group of people or we don't have any, any certain discretion. But it, it does take everybody, man, it takes everybody, you know, uh.
Do you think we can build from right now, do you think Saginaw can build from where the city council is at? Or do, to be broken down and rebuild all over with different people?
I do think that we, we need more people run, I do think we need more people like this, you know, we have a lot of people running. I think, I, I think that's good, you have more people involved. But also too, we have boards, you know, the city has different boards, like the Human Planning Commission Board, you got the uh, you know, downtown. All these different committees, they got these different committees and I encourage the public to get involved, get in the, get in those committees. You know, and maybe having ten seats available, some of them have twenty-one different seats. And so get in those seats and get involved and understand first too, you know. Um, cause sometimes you think that you can do so many, you, you don't know enough to just go right into city council.
Yes, yes.
When I, I moved back home, I moved back home four or five years ago and I knew I was gonna do this and I gave myself a five.
So you already, this was preordained in your head that you was gonna do this? Yeah, so you saying usually when you run for city council, be a politician, it's not something you just up and do on the whim. It's basically something that's been kind of like poking at you for some time.
Right, right, this something that I, I knew I was gonna get, I was gonna be doing, and I imagine myself doing. Um, you know, I was coaching basketball, um, you know, I'm sorry, you know, minister at my church, I forgot to mention that, at St. Luke's, uh, CME Church on Fifth and Tuscola. You know, um, and so we have Sunday service there, but I host this thing called Bible Talk on Thursday from six thirty to eight and it's open to everyone. Um, we have people from different churches that come there and we sit and talk about the Bible, you know, talk about the word as well. And um, you know, and so just by, just a, a good group discussion, just like me and you talking.
So what is the message that you want people to get from your campaign? What is the meaning that you want people to get from your campaign? For them to go in and cast their vote in November for Eric Brenner?
Man, to understand that it goes take everybody to be a part of this process, you know what I'm saying? When I, I really, I really think that we are stronger together. Um, one thing we have to realize that, that, you know, with my military experience and being in combat, one thing I do understand about our country at this. That it's, it's very, very, we, we probably won't never happen. Our military would not turn their guns on their citizens like in other countries. And so we have an opportunity to build and, and build our communities up, just like, you know, like in um. You have the, the Black Wall Street in Tulsa, Rosewood, there's many other cities like that in the south that was destroyed. When, you know, with, with uh, black communities and, and of that nature, but we have, we have the opportunity to build our communities up. You know, like that, where the dollars are circulating, where you have the black owned businesses and we have, and, and it won't, we won't get destroyed like that, you know. And so I think that's what you're saying, far as it's important that everyone gets involved, you know, I mean, from every, from, from the top to the bottom, everybody has to be involved. Um, you know, we have the community centers, you have uh, First Ward, you have uh, the May. You know, and so they're, they're, they're taking care of our babies and having programs for our kids in our community. And so we need to double down on some, a lot of the things that we have going on with help and, and um, some of the mentor program, so. We, we, it's gonna take all of us to come in to, you know, pitch in and come together and make these, make this thing pop, you know, and to make this change, man. We need to, I think we need a mentality change in our culture. You know, how we do this.
Definitely need a mentality change in our culture. What you think is the greatest thing that's destroying our culture right now?
Man, you know, I think right now, I, well, as far as the culture, I would like to just focus on our city.
Right, what do you think is the greatest thing that's destroying our city right now?
I think it's the, uh, um, the history, our history, you know, um, our history. I think if we can kind of denounce this history that we have with ourselves, you know, you got, you got. If we can, if we can stop, we can, we can stop living off that history.
So what you saying, we, we stay, we wanna be conservatives instead of, you know, trying new things, you know. Because sometimes, you know, history don't play into the now. If we're trying to pattern what we're doing off history.
Well, well, you know, so what, so you, you got, you got these, you got these, you got the north side, east side beef, you know, you have this gang violence. You have these different um, murders, so you got all this, you got all this emotional behind it.
Oh, street history.
And you know, all the street history, you got all this different, you got all this, you know, there's different names and different, you know.
Right.
And so we, we need to denounce some of these things, you know what I'm saying, publicly saying, look, there's no more of this. There's no more of that. We gotta move forward, you know, and so, you know, and um, you know. And so I think that's what it's gonna take, man, because, you know, we, I believe, you know, we still have. You know, we, we still have these different beefs and some of these beefs are so historical, man, I mean, shoot, some of these beefs when I was a kid.
Right.
Some of these neighborhoods just coming at each other and then I don't wanna go name dropping right now, cause I don't wanna, you know.
But the beef, but, but the beef is kept within the family and it goes from the uncle to the nephew, to the nephew, to their son.
Not to the grandchildren, yeah, you know what I'm saying, and so we have to, I think we have to stop that and I think that's. I think if we can change the mindset of the youth, you know what I'm saying, we can get, you know, more, because you got, you, you gotta think, man, it's not. Our generation, we, we not out here killing each other.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? We gonna have a good time.
I can't say that, well, well, I'm saying, our generation is. Well, I just had a friend that, that I was locked up. You know, you kill somebody in jail, right, die, I can't, I'm trying to figure out, man, like, and, and I helped him. I helped him get out some days earlier because we was in a lot of high barrier together.
I mean, you have your.
You know, but I'm just saying.
Majority, right, the majority of what goes on is, you know, a lot of the younger generation, you know.
Right.
You know, we got mothers, you know.
But we don't wanna forget that we do have to have some, some ther- therapy. And we have to also have to implement some things to do for the adults as well. Because we don't, we don't wanna overlook them as well, it's like, they don't need the time and attention as well when they doing shit around here. Just as well as the young doing.
Right, and you had that, that, you know, like you had that demographic of that uh, that, you know, that late teen, like from seventeen to twenty-five. You know, maybe from sixteen to twenty-five, man, you know, that, you know, and I, and I always say, we, you know. We gotta give them something to look forward to too, you know what I'm saying?
So what we gonna do about the, the trauma that these kids have experienced? How are we gonna be able to get these kids some psychological help dealing with a lot of their brother dying, their daddy dying, their sister. Dealing with a lot of, their brother died, their daddy died, their sister died, their mother died. From a lot of these shootings and a lot of this violence, and here it is, them, these young kids gotta accept that, having this hurt and pain. And now I gotta go to school and learn, but my mind is still attentive on my mama and and you know, not being there. Why my mama didn't take me school shopping or why I'm not seeing my daddy? You know, because somebody had killed them from gun violence, you know, have you, is, you know, have you thought about? Any any type of psychological trauma or anything as to where we can get the kids some help? From a lot of this violence that's happening within the city?
Well, I I I guess I have thought about any, you know, far as doing something like, you know, some technical, you know, some. Technically far as um, and psychology or psychologists around, but I do believe that we have to tap into the younger generation. I think that far as the third and um, third and fourth grade, me and um, me and Robert Brown, First Ward Director Brown, man, he been talking. We in, we in the planning now, trying to do something with the younger generation from the south side and the north side. And hopefully we can get that younger generation to start doing things together, taking them on trips or doing, you know. And um, we 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 in the planning process of trying to get that done, um, that's, that's that's fresh, man, I'm still talking about that. Um, but tha- that's that's what's needed, you know what I'm saying, because I think we have to start in a younger generation, I think this generation, I'm not saying it's too late. But we have to offer something different because they already had that mentality, they already had that emotion, you, my brother, my friend, they already been killed, I wanna go kill this one. I I I want some revenge, and so we have to, we have to try to.
Switch up that thinking.
We had to switch up that thinking, be, you know, the retaliations and all that type of stuff, so, but. I think that we have to get that younger generation, man, and, you know, starting in the fourth and third grade, and we got to start really being more intentional. With that age group and getting that, getting those different sides of the mu- youngsters together because. There's no way that the kids should be in the seventh grade beefing about size.
Exactly, and then you have, you know, it's like every kid wanna be a rapper now. And we need people like you who's running for city council, you know, who's helping to protect our, you know, um. Who's compassionate about the community, who's helping to uplift and 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 bring the community, bring the community. To a lot of new things that you trying to implement, because it's like everybody, every kid wanna be in the entertainment world. And I'm telling them sometimes, man, it's okay, man, we need more politicians, actually. You know, we we wouldn't have these problems with these streaming channels and all this and that, you know, we have more politicians. You know, so how important is it, man, you think it is, man, for kids to? Be more politically involved now, especially with all the chaos and and all the drama and 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 and. And all the different uh disfavor that we going in the political world today?
Man, you know, it's, I I think that it's, it's, it is.
We got a president, he's thirty-four counts, thirty-four felon, he's running for president, you know?
Well, well, it is important that the uh, we have the the youth and the, you know, the next generation into politics, but I think. I work in the school district and I'm just, you know, I'm saying, I'm not saying every, I'm just working, I'm just gonna go ahead and say it. The skill load for them kids is low, man, and I I've been working with kids that don't even know how to, that that, don't even know the multiplication table.
And they say they don't, kids don't know how to write in cursive no more.
Man, don't I, so it's a lot of fundamental skills and, you know, we we asking, we asking the kids to be socially conscious. But man, but they have to learn how to comprehend and read, just, you know, the basic fundamentals of reading and comprehending. We have to get that back in the home, I was talking to my uh my big cousin, um, and I was on the phone a couple days and um. Man, I was talking, I was like, cousin, remember when we was, when we was younger? Remember we was at grandma table and we used to sit, we used to read the cereal box, we used to compete on who know the um multiplication tables? You know, I don't know, you know, we used to do that, you know, sitting color crayon, you know, and. Of course, we cut up, it was bad like everybody else, but we took, we played school, you know, yeah, you played school and we had competition. I don't, I don't know if kids doing that at home no more, you know, I don't know, you know, we used to get the books, grandma had the little medical, you know, my grand, grandparents had the little medical books. We used to look at the the anatomy of the body and, and so, so we used to always be exposed to more things than just.
Had the globe around us, encyclopedia.
But if your, if your si- if your child only see you smoking and drinking every day.
Yeah, and scrolling and 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 study watching social media every day.
You know, when, you know, and so if your kid not exposed to those things, then how can we get that? You know, and so, you know, and so, and that's the thing, you know, and I I think, yeah, it's important that. You know, we 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 pass those things down, but we have to get the fundamentals first.
Yeah, we do.
We got to get, we got to focus on the fundamentals.
So how do you plan on inspiring, man, other youth who wanna be into politics? Who wanna get into politics, man, and who probably, you know, did a couple tours like you did, that was in the military. That's looking at the political world and feel like they can change some things, what would you, what would you say to them, man? And and how would you inspire them, you know, to get out there and 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 get into the world?
Man, hopefully, um, I was talking to a friend, well, you know, everybody pretty much, me and Jeffrey Boers, I was talking to Jeffrey Boers, that's one thing we was talking about, trying to. Raise up, you know, fi- you know, once we, once we, once we accomplish this, um, once, well, once I accomplish this. Um, let's try, we, man, can work together, try to get some younger gen- younger people in to um. You know, and to, by example, you know, you know, and you know, to to and try to, there's something going till we can get some young folks that, you know, wanna be a part of it. First of all, you know, you gotta got some good youth that wanna be a part of it, but um, and and not just, and um, Brown too, um, from the First Ward. So we have talked a little bit about it too, but I just, you know, wanted really pu- pour it down to the young generation. Cause what can't do this forever, you know what I'm saying, you know, so, you know, can't do this forever, and so we we are looking to pass it down and. Hopefully we could recruit some young folks, so we in the, we in, we we in the beginning stages of that too though, but. I hopefully we can find some um, some young men that, and some young women, young men and women, that are, you know, that. Wanna do the work, you know?
Exactly, so listen, man, before we get out of here, you know, Eric Braddock, we on his campaign, man, for city council, man. Make sure y'all vote for him out there too.
I say y'all go register to vote, um, you can register right on your phone, go on to michigan.gov uh uh website. Um, vote, um, we could probably put it in the, put it in the comments, the link, and go on your phone and register to vote, man, and your vote is important. Um, help us get in there so we can make a difference.
Yeah, man, like I said, we gotta make a difference, man, we sit out and we criticize and we badmouth the political world. And we looking at it like a reality show, instead of getting off our feet and taking action. As to where we can change our reality. The black vote has evaporated.
Gotta get out and vote, man, we gotta get out and vote, gotta get up.
We care more about entertainment. And not saying that we can't have our fun and, you know, you know, have our pleasures and enjoyment in life, but. We be, we entertaining ourselves more than we getting out to the polls. And if we get out to the polls, we can change some things within entertainment, you know? So let's not criticize and let's not sit back and just badmouth the things that's going on in political world. If you ain't gonna get out and vote, then do something about it, you just gonna go to the next concert. At least vote before you go. You know, because what happening is, we been, we beginning to drown. You know, we beginning to fall in the place we never been. You know, but the way out of that is getting to the polls and voting for the people, for the right people. You know, we got Eric Braddock here.
That's the thing though, you know, we we, you have the support, you know, you 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 see the support, you have the support, but people gotta actually get out and vote. You know, people have to, you know, put aside what they got going on for the day, get out and vote.
I just want us to be able to get out and vote, because at the end of the day, your vote do matter, you wanna see some changes in your community? Get out and vote for Eric Braddock, you know, get out and support his campaign, tell somebody about. Tell somebody about him, so they can go vote for him as well, you know?
Yeah, and you want somebody that represents you, you know, and 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 that's who I am, I represent this city, you know what I'm saying, and the people here, the people that know me in the city know I represent this city. You know what I'm saying, I'm them, I'm just like them, I grew up like them, you know what I'm saying, no different than anybody else that grew up in, you know, from Saginaw, from the city. And so, you know, I grew up with the school in the Saginaw Public School District and and I probably drunk Kool-Aid out of everybody's house.
So listen, man, how can you not vote to support somebody like, man, he drunk Kool-Aid out of everybody's house, man, come on, be the everybody table, know everybody mama. Man, know my whole family, you know what I'm saying, come on, man, this Eric Braddock, man, y'all get out and vote for him, man, y'all get out and support him, man. November sixth, man, get to the polls and vote for Eric Braddock.